Well, good evening. It's 7:00 PM, July 13th, 2023, and I'd like to welcome everyone here in the room and those participating online as I call to order this meeting Dr. Belbrook Sugar Green Board on Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. We value everyone's input and have made sure the dedicated portion of this meeting we hear from you. We look forward to your comments during that time as indicated on the agenda. Mr. Wondell, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mrs. Dorn?
Here.
Mr. Kinsey?
Present.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
If you're able, you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Liman with the treasurer's report.
Second motion to approve amendments from meeting held June 30th.
Sum up.
Second. Mrs. Dorn and I heard Mr. Price. Questions, corrections? Please call the roll on adoption of amendments.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of June?
Sum up.
Second. Mrs. Anderson and Mr. Carpenter.
This is the financial report for the end of fiscal year, June 30th, so it's probably the most important one. And just want to point out a few things. We usually talk about salaries and benefits and percentage of our budget. Actually, of the monthly budget in those two areas, we only spent 98% of that, so that's good. On the negative side, for revenue, the state foundation funding, we only received 95% of what I budgeted again for the years received. And that's just that, maybe I estimated too high, I don't know, but typically we say our state funding is frozen, and that's pretty much what happened this year. We received about 73% of our funding locally and 27% from state and federal sources in the general fund. Let's see. Just want to say fiscal year in processing is completed. You know, I mean a lot to you guys, but that's the busiest time of the year for our offices, about June 15th now, so we've just come out of the woods and we're glad that that's done. We have an audit coming up in a couple of months probably, definitely have one coming up, I'm not sure if it's a couple of months. And appropriations that were approved at the last meeting have been filed with the county auditor's office at timely manner, so we're good there. And then the pie charts showing where we received and spent money for the whole fiscal year are included on the website, and that's, I think, all I have, nothing questions.
Kevin, going back to that state foundation funding, so you got 95%, I can't even remember the number that you estimated was, 6.25 million?
Yes.
So is that the end of the story? They actually, we got $300,000 or so less than that, and that's just the way it is?
Yes. There are a lot of factors in that, in our funding sheet. There are less factors for us districts like us that are, we're on the guarantee for funding, so we get a flat line in certain areas, but there are others that we do get added on or deducted, different kinds of special ed, transportation, and trying to think of them off the top of my head, there are a lot of things like that. And it seemed like we had, when we needed more students, we had less and vice versa in those areas, we just didn't get the money.
So the state makes sure they subtract that very, very accurately so they can very easily subtract away from what we might get out of it.
And what was not a cross-board cut like we got from the state during COVID, it was just the factors that made the state funding decrease from what I thought it was going to be.
I just find it interesting, a lot of the just approved budget, you know, for the fair school, which included the fair school funding plan, and if I read it correctly, we're going to get $38,000 more in the upcoming year, and I believe Xenia and Kettering, I would probably flip them here, but 1.3 million and 1.8, 1.6, 1.9, somewhere in there. So it's kind of interesting, let's say the least.
The fair school funding.
Yeah.
$38,000 on a $35 million budget, things like that.
Yeah, continues to be a concern. For those of you in the audience, that's the reason we get not much from the state. I think if you, going back to clock historically, we got around, back in the 80s, about 60, 65% of our funding from the state. And now, it was about the time I was coming on the board, it was around 27%. I think now, Kevin, when you, we talked about now, by lenses you look through, it's now down to about 25%.
Right, state funding, yes.
And so what the state does is they look at your real estate values and your income, and then they say, hey, you guys are well off, so we're just not going to give, we're going to give you $38,000 while they give to Kettering or to Xenia. They're bigger school districts, but they're not 30 times bigger. And so they give them, in this case, I think it's 1.3 and 1.6 million extra in this last year, and we get $38,000. So as an average, sure, we're fine as a district, you know, as far as the community here, but there are people that are below that 50th, right? There are people down in the, you know, in the lower part, parkport, that 50%, so it's unfortunate. It's not, we can't print our own money here, right? So it's just a struggle with the state, it's going to continue, and I don't have any real answer for it. But we would really appreciate hearing from the community because this is going to always be an issue unless our community goes into economic decline, which I don't think we would like to see that. Just some thoughts.
Just a comment, you said that we have an audit coming up, we definitely have an audit coming up, and there's nothing that's really prompted that audit, other than it being the end of the year and this happens every year.
Right.
I didn't want to leave the impression that, ooh, we have an audit coming.
Oh, yes. It's not like a personal audit.
Yeah, it's a normal process.
Districts are audited annually, and this one, the big change of mission before is pointing to this to be done by CPA firm and not by the state of Ohio's auditor's office. So the big change that I'm looking forward to.
Yep.
Should be a lot better.
Other comments from the treasurer's report? Mr. Liman, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Does anybody have any correspondence that they've received that they would like to share? Good in the night? Okay. Well, we're going to move into what's always our favorite part here, good news recognition. Exceptional young people to honor tonight. Let me seek out. Make sure to turn the arrow. A first, Tanner Killen, second team All-State in lacrosse. Anything you'd like to share, anybody you'd like to introduce?
Uh, thank you.
Good job, thank you. Eldon Corber, third team All-State lacrosse. It works.
No thanks.
All right. We'll leave it all on the field. Up next, Bennett LaPalm, second team All-State in baseball.
Thank you.
Okay. And next is Daphne Lee, 2023 U.S. Lacrosse Academic All-American. Thank you. I heard at Alliance Club, you don't like public speaking, so I wasn't even going to ask. Benjamin Russell, 2023 U.S. Lacrosse Academic All-American. Good?
Yep.
So we're not going to have any hurt feelings at all. If anybody present the age of like 25 wants to get out of here, I get it, it's okay. Thanks so much. Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
Next, we'd like to welcome Ms. Gann, our Director of Curriculum and Gifted Services. Thanks so much for being here tonight.
Thank you. Since we have no internet, we're going to win it here with PDF version of the slideshow, but this is short and sweet because it's not a typical curriculum adoption. It is what I would call an off-cycle curriculum adoption because now that we're really trying to take the expense of textbook adoption off the plates of principals and building budgets and build it into district-level curriculum department expenses every six years, looking at a different department, getting everyone on a cycle, we're going to have this sort of off-cycle, for lack of a better term, expense and sort of hot ball, so to speak, adoption. So this is an example of that, just some books that were really, really old that needed to be replaced due to the changing landscape in both the math department, and I'll get into that in a second, as well as business, because it's ever-changing, like all areas, technology and the business landscape. So thank you so much for considering these materials. Give Henry the nod here, it's my virtual clicker. So the needs include, for this year anyway, for this spring, for implementation for the fall, Statistics 1 and 2, those are semester courses, and the reason they've broken down 1 and 2 is because if students now take both Statistics 1 and 2, they can have credit for Algebra 2 as an equivalent. Algebra 2 is considered a required course in the state of Ohio, but ODE has made some changes with offering some new courses. Stats has been around for a long time, but there are some other things. And one that we do offer at the high school as another alternative called mathematical modeling reasoning, that's also an alternative to Algebra 2, but if you take Statistics 1 and 2, you could take that in place of Algebra 2. So we didn't have a book for a semester elective of stats before, so that was okay. The teacher could, you know, certainly come up with enough content for that semester without a textbook, but we can't put that off any longer with kids probably signing up for both semesters, so that's why I'm here tonight, to ask for your support for that textbook. And then Business Foundations, an example of just the changing landscape in business, the age of the book, and so that is certainly a dire need. And then Computer Essentials, and, you know, that's pretty self-explanatory. The landscape of teaching those skills for kids is ever-changing, and Mr. Craig really needed something that was very Google-centric because, you know, not only is that the way of the world, and our kids need lots and lots of different exposure to lots of different applications, but they live in a very Google environment here. So we do have a textbook coming out in August, so I don't have hard copies of that, but we do have a pretty detailed explanation in paper form here for you, and most of you have seen that, I believe. So going back to the fact that this is an off-cycle adoption for these three books, two departments, the departments math and business are projected to be on full adoptions for the whole departments in '25, '26 for the math department, and then for business, '27, '28. So for the business department, Mrs. France, Mr. Craig, will have an opportunity to review both these books if they're approved, as well as, you know, their other courses, to see what they might need for those for updates. And at that point, we certainly hope, barring any financial obstacles and constraints in the future, we would be on a six-year cycle. Same with math, '25, '26. Mrs. Rivera feels pretty confident that, you know, stats and stats and stats, but it would give her another opportunity to look at that book and make sure. We did analyze costs, you know, two years versus eight years, so taking that book two years to eight years, the cost is negligible for digital licensure, so she will take a look at that again and make sure that's still the right fit for the students at that point in time, if that's the calendar we stick with. So the review cycle for stats 1 and 2, we've provided two physical books for review and in business, it was an online review of those business books that were available, and we had a couple of business books out for review, both to the board and to the public, and we had a calendar I'll go into here in a moment. And Computer Essentials, I already mentioned that that physical books, the book comes out in early August. Those public review opportunities, per board policy, were made available on June 30th and July 6th, so these three books, I know this isn't a book, but at least they hand out the Google book for computer applications, were made available to the public for review and were members had separate time to review those offerings as well, or those recommendations. So kind of drawing to an end here, this is the proposal I'd like you to consider, just a summary there, the proposed titles, Statistics 1 and 2, Computer Essentials and Business Foundations, and those are just the details on those particular books, publishers, et cetera. I do have a proposed calendar for where all the different departments will land in this six-year cycle that we're working out, and I wanted to have a hard copy for you to review because it's not in the slideshow, but with the printers being connected to the internet, I didn't print that out today. So I could provide that certainly by email, because it's not something that, you know, is critical to this presentation, it's just for information. And it's a draft, again, barring any financial constraints, we're hoping we can get everyone on a regular review cycle and make everyone's life easier. Any questions?
So are these hard copies, like class copies, or are they online copies?
Online copies and class sets.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you so much for considering.
Up next is our open communication period. Henry or Kevin kind of making the closing. Your thoughts and comments are welcome during this time.
Thank you very much.
When given the floor, please share your name, address, and any group affiliation you hold. You'll then have five minutes for your comments, which should be directed towards the presiding officer, and tonight happens to be me. In case you're wondering, the reason for these policies, which can be read in their entirety on the district's website in Policy Number 169.91, is to ensure that everyone who wishes to speak has time to do so and that every speaker is treated equally and fairly. Welcome, Mike Ruden.
Good to meet you.
Thanks for being here.
Good, thanks. So I'm Mike Ruden from Belbrook, so I got up, I think it was the last school board meeting, and just had a request for consideration to tone down the, at least the public communication about some of our controversial topics, so I know we asked a new comment with that. So I will say a Dean Daily News from June 23rd, they listed kind of nine things that were moving to the Ohio House and Senate for this year's budget, and they just asked it, and should be here legislative update, how that might impact some of us, like here in this school district. But going down through their school vouchers, prohibiting any DEI training, Ohio Department of Education removing some of their power and authority, eliminating third-grade reading guarantee, banning transgender girls participating in sports, and then kind of the last one, which I was surprised, the House Bill 103, having a Republican-only-led task force implementing a statewide social studies curriculum based on the American birth, right? All these, you know, are very, I would consider right-wing, Republican, kind of culture war issues, a lot of these. So they may already be getting implemented, or they may be coming down the, down, down very shortly here. So, you know, again, if that's where we want to get to, I may disagree with Summer Most for all of those, but if that's where we want to get to, you know, we can let that process proceed without maybe taking the lead as much. And again, I had a friend, a high school friend, I grew up in Cincinnati, from Seattle, contact me a couple of months ago when we, you know, removed the protection for certain classes of folks from our policy here. I made the news in Seattle for Belbrook High School, so that's something I maybe might hope to avoid with some of these issues. So that being said, good news, Dean Daily News, it had a report about superintendent salary, and fortunately it said salaries have been increasing tremendously, Belbrook is at the far lower end of it, it specifically mentioned Belbrook, so I don't know if that means, feel like we're getting 14th or we're getting a great bounty, but either way, thank you, so that maybe that is a good news thing, or maybe that puts Belbrook in a good light on, I'm not sure, but appreciate all the work you do, how it goes ahead. So finally, just want to say about the curriculum, about the curriculum discussions, that's kind of come to a head. About two weeks ago, we went to a family anniversary, 50th wedding anniversary for dinner. My son, my 12-year-old, attends Belbrook, was there, they had cake, and I said, why don't you have a piece of cake? He said, no, I can't do that, Dad. And I said, why is that? Well, I already had a cookie for dessert for lunch. Well, you can still have a piece of cake. No, my teacher, my home ed teacher says that you should only have one dessert a day for optimal health and nutrition. And I said, well, I think we can make an exception here, you can have a piece of cake for your cell rate. And he said, well, I think I want to have optimal health and nutrition, so I think I'm just going to pass on the cake. So we had a discussion there, you know, so does that mean that I really need to really be hardcore about the home ed curriculum here and how that's not with our family values? You know, we think, we think you can have cookies for every, dessert every meal? No, you know, it's something that you just thought, we have a good conversation, we kind of addressed the issue, having different viewpoints, and it's actually a good learning experience for both of us. So, you know, I hesitate, I don't get worked as worked up about all this curriculum stuff as many other folks do, you know, different viewpoints are good, differing types of information are good, and it instigates a lot of good conversations in our household. So I appreciate all that, I hope that we continue to support the teachers with the curriculums and the, you know, the curriculums that they recommend. I think that they're the professionals, and as we've gone through, we've always said we defer to the professionals, so we appreciate that. Okay, that's all, thanks.
Thank you very much, appreciate you being here. All right, that's the end of our list, which closes our public comment period time. Moving into the superintendent's report.
Yes, so we're going to have a consent agenda for A through D, certificated license employment resignation leave of absence supplemental duty, certificated, and then supplemental duties, puberty activity, I'm sorry, B is support staff employment resignation leave of absence, and then C is substitute teacher, school nurse, substitute to support staff employment, and then D, central office employment resignation leave of absence. For first and second.
Sum up. Second.
Mrs. Dorn and Mrs. Anderson. Questions?
Nope, just still a lot of trying to finish up our staffing for next school year, we're extremely close, maybe just have a few positions to fill, but all of our teaching positions are filled, and so again, really pleased to welcome all of these folks to our school district and those that are leaving, good luck to them as they move on to their next part of life.
How are we talking about bus drivers, standing? Is that still an issue?
So we are, we're about at even where we need to be, if things pan out the way that they're looking to pan out, unless there's something that goes sideways, we are looking to be about even, or maybe needing an additional. So possibly contracting in the end with first student, if we do need that at first for that additional person. But we have a couple of people that are school and training this summer, so again, if things go well and fine for those, we should be about even. But again, we can always use more, just because you never know, lives, absence, or things happen, so we're in a much better place than we were last year, definitely.
We have come in the transportation department on that, the administration, everybody who works hard, it was a priority, even the school board kind of said, hey, we'd really like to use more of that bus, and everybody jumped on it quick. I follow a lot of different school districts on social media, and I will often see something scrolling through in the morning and say, hey, you know, sorry, another school district, those buses are out, I've never seen those evac, so good to go, everybody.
On the busing topic, are those other buses coming, I know there were four new buses, correct? Are they here? Those are going to be equipped, I believe, with those new camera systems, all right, help us catch any would-be bus runners.
Correct. And I'm sure you're on top of it, that there's like the way that downtown is right now, I know I have a bus driver, like, I know there's a plan, there has to be a plan, if I can do the plan like sooner than later, because I think it's supposed to be starting to September, and I've sat in those lines and they are not fun.
Yeah, so, you know, with that, unfortunately, there's only so many ways to get around Belbrook, and so I think there's going to be probably some delays if people get stuck, you know, buses get stuck in a line of traffic, so.
For sure.
I wish there were a lot more crossroads, but there are not, so.
I should go all the way around, it's hard.
Yeah, so luckily, they aren't shutting the road completely down, so it is.
Might be better, go just for two weeks, no road, and we're done.
Yeah, that might be better for two weeks, especially if they're in summer.
Right.
Yes, yeah, that'd be ideal, but.
There is a plan and it will be communicated.
Yeah, at this point, the plan is.
Fingers crossed, right?
Well, we're, there's just going to be a little bit longer wait for getting through that traffic, there's just not an easy way to get around, because if you go all the way around, is that, that's probably going to be longer than.
They're running through.
Definitely, if there's a way to go around it, we're definitely getting going.
One hundred percent.
One other thing, I don't know if you all, the board members knew or not, but towards the end of the year, Mr. Fun went out and tagged along one of the bus route, and it was really informative to see that, and it was really, really insightful, and I don't know, I was really, I was extremely impressed with the bus driver that I had, forgot her name, I really forgot her name.
I think it was Lily, I'm like.
Exactly, it was Lily, there we go. And Lily, if you're watching this, Academy Award-winning production here tonight, I will never forget your face and all the stories you told me, so, but it was really very insightful, she was extremely thorough, very careful, very professional, very caring of the kids, and they just provided me good insight and understanding of the challenges they faced, and I consider that, you know, but I'm pretty darn sure you'll survive, and I'm sure from the traffic, the kids might be another task for you with your noise levels and all, but no, it was, it was really, really enjoyable.
Mr. Liman, would you please call the roll on adoption of the consent agenda.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item E, we're considering tonight a couple of different amendments to both the superintendent and treasurer employment contracts, so I would point you at like this tan-colored packet that you received in your larger packet earlier and will be someplace.
Mr. Liming, please call the role on adoption of the consent agenda.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item E, we're considering tonight a couple different amendments to both the superintendent and treasurer employment contracts, so I would point you at like this tan-colored packet that you receive in your larger packet, and we'll need someplace where everyone's had a chance to kind of include that, and ask you any questions here in a minute, if you have some. Kind of one of the big goals for this was to just make sure things kind of align, and we're not an outlier in a lot of ways, so kind of let's go piece by piece through this. But first, for the treasurer contract, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended contract for the treasurer with changes to compensation and benefits as proposed in the written agreement provided to board members for consideration in your package.
Second.
I moved, and Mrs. Dorn seconded, so like, for example, talk about that alignment, Mr. Liming's contract has a 261-day calendar, Dr. Cozad's always had a 260-day calendar, is one of the things that's just aligned. Questions on the motion for the treasurer's amendments? Okay, Mr. Liming, please call the role.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes. I would like to make another motion to approve the amended contract for the superintendent with changes to compensation and benefits as proposed in the written agreement provided to board members for consideration in your package, placing the superintendent at step seven for the 2023-24 school year, and retroactive to August 1st, 2022, at step six for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Carpenter seconded one motion. So kind of one of the things in here is introducing the superintendent a schedule. All of the teachers have a schedule, all of the principals and administrators have a schedule, Mr. Liming has a schedule, so just kind of synchronizing, putting the superintendent position on the schedule is kind of one of the things. Any questions on amendments for the superintendent?
Not a question, but discussion, so.
Sure. Yeah, we've been seconded, so go for it.
Okay, so it'd be a whole lot easier just to not say anything at all, but I can't not do that. So first of all, thank you, Mr. Kenzie, for all the effort you did to make sure that all of our thoughts and viewpoints, no matter where we stood, were considered, and were presented as part of the proposal, and I really appreciate everything you did to make sure that everybody was heard and valued, so thank you for that. To my fellow board members, I understand your loyalty and compassion towards the superintendent. I understand and respect the desire to make sure all of our employees have a fair compensation that is reflective of a job well done, and I fully support that process. Based on some of my own observations, as well as interactions, and some recently resolved legal issues, I am unwilling to support this increase in compensation. When I make decisions on board-related matters, I've always said that my decision must check at least one of the, one of the boxes, but preferably all three of the following boxes. First, it must be the absolute best for students, best for our staff, best for our community and taxpayers, and this agenda item unfortunately does not check any of those boxes for me personally. I've wrestled with this, with all the options that were presented, and I did not make this decision lightly. Last week, we had a large number of people over to our house to celebrate the Fourth, and it was a huge cross-section of individuals from our community, all walks of life, all varying age groups in our community. I happened to overhear one of their conversations as I was buzzing around. They were specifically talking about the job done by a superintendent, and even more specifically, the past legal situations. Their analysis of this board really bothered me, they said that we didn't care, and that we didn't listen to anything that was being said. Their analysis really bothered me, because I know nothing could be further from the truth. I know that only speaking from myself, but also what we know of you all, I know that you care very deeply about this district and want what is best for it, and I understand we all will not always agree on what that is, and that's okay. I wish I could say it was the first time that I had heard or been told of these concerns regarding our superintendent, but it is not. I hear these exact concerns everywhere I go, school events, sporting events, community events, grocery store pride events. I hear it from people outside our community, as well as inside our community, from parents, students, staff, even residents who don't currently have students in our district. I want to make it very clear that I appreciate everyone feeling comfortable enough to share their feedback and thoughts with me, and take every word to heart, both the good and the bad. That being said, I would not be honoring my convictions or the concerns of those that are state holders in our district if I abstained or just voted no without comment. Trust me, that would have been a lot easier, but I needed to be transparent about my why, and I want the community to know that I hear you and I understand and share some of those concerns.
Other comments?
Just off the cuff, this district in the last, what, five years has been through quite a few scenarios that one might say, gosh, this has never happened before, with a pandemic and thinking the board tries to get a letting pass, so dealing with financial scenarios, the different, the different issues and ways that we had to treat the COVID pandemic in order to keep kids in school as long as possible. And also, our superintendent has done all the things that we have asked him to, which are really kind of beyond what has normally, excuse me, been requested of the superintendent. So I do think that this compensation is way overdue for our superintendent, and that not to, not to denigrate people's opinions, but it's very easy to be a Monday morning quarterback when you don't live in the scenario on a day-in, a day-out basis. The responsibility of the superintendent is huge, huge, with lots of people who, whose livelihoods are dependent upon that job and report up eventually just to the superintendent. So it's a lot of responsibility on the superintendent, and it's a lot of work on the superintendent to not recognize that and appreciate that, would be wrong for the board to not recognize and honor that. I think that, I think that our superintendent has well earned this compensation package that we put together, and I fully support it.
My comment would be that if you do some research and look in the surrounding area with respect to varying levels of compensation, considering numbers of students, numbers of employees, the years of experience, et cetera, what Dr. Cozad would, will have gotten assuming this passes here, is still below the average for the area. And so I think that to me is, is pretty, I guess, validating that this is the proper thing to do.
All right, Mr. Liming, not hearing any further discussion, please call the role on considering amendments to the superintendent's contract.
Mrs. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to letter F in our agenda, textbook adoption.
Okay, quick comment, please. As I will soon start my sixth year, finishing on my fifth year, as I soon start my sixth year in district, I appreciate and thank the board for approving and amending my contract. From the first day in the district, I have dedicated myself and given 110% to Belrock Sheriff's Schools. I believe the district is in its best position ever, especially financially, and I look towards the future with a growth mindset to take the district to even greater heights. So thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Can I make one clarification as well? Just to be able to say that we're amending the contract, so this is an amendment to the terms of the contract, not the term duration of the contract. It's a contract, I work in contracts, and we're terms and term, get confused, but this amendment to the terms of the contract, not to the term, this is under renewal or extension, this is an amendment to the contents, just to clarify for anyone watching.
Textbook adoption, recommend adoption of the high school textbooks effective with the 23-24 school year.
Summled.
Second.
Chief Carpenter and Mrs. Anderson?
And obviously, those are the books that Mrs. Gann presented earlier for Stats 1 and 2, Computer Essentials and Business Foundations.
An opportunity for questions earlier, if any of you wants? Okay, Mr. Liming, please call the role.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
I just had a follow-up on that, thank you, Mrs. Gann, or, Mrs. G, I'm sorry, for getting the, putting this all together, for your diligence in working with curriculum, because it is a hot button sometimes, and we appreciate you being willing to feel that through and share with your folks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Mrs. France, for your patience. I'm glad to thank you for updating your, updating your essentials.
Thanks, Debbie, for all the work with curriculum. And you can take her back home, like you.
I really drew information.
I was hoping somebody was going to say it.
I read that too, I didn't know. But I knew she was going to start to freak out. Yeah, she's a teacher, she knows. She's good.
Time for summer planning.
Not too much, not too much planning.
There you go. All right, item G on our agenda?
Athletic government, recommend approval of the following athletic government activity: cross-country camping trip to Houston Woods on August 4th to the 6th.
Summled.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn and Mrs. Anderson? Please call the role.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Donation, recommend acceptance of the following donation with gratitude: Michael Hahn, a thousand, a thousand canisters of alcohol wipes.
Summled.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Dorn.
A thousand canisters of alcohol wipes are in, packed in a ten and box, a hundred in a box, it's on a pallet, this big, and about this high, it's a huge number of wipes, but he had, Michael Hahn contacted me about it and asked if the district was interested in receiving them, but I was like, sure. And he had like six or seven thousand of them to distribute off at different school districts. Wow. So not sure exactly how, how does somebody get that, but, so anyway, I was grateful for his, his contribution. He and his kids came over and helped unload them, and, you know, so everyone felt he distributed to the schools as needed. My kids do other, our projects at our kitchen tables and education, we probably get through a lot of stuff like that.
Yeah.
That's new.
Please call the role on acceptance of this very generous donation.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Fong.
Ads information discussion, open house, we're talking about next year, so open house, meeting Greek parent-teacher conferences, all of those dates and times and places are in the board packet, and will also be online on the calendar page, and also embedded into the Google Calendar. So a great way to stay up on all this is go to the Google Calendar and load it right in, you have the Google Gmail, load it right into your own calendar, you don't have to type all those things in, and it is all there. So we have quite a busy August here, as we're getting back on August 9th, and, and meet and greets, summer during the day, summer at nights, orientations, and also the parent-teacher conferences are stated there. And also, you'll notice with an asterisk there, we are having curriculum nights on those particular nights during parent-teacher conferences, and so we'll work out the details of what that exactly looks like, but folks will be able to come in and review textbooks and things going on in our classrooms. So that will be on those particular nights during parent-teacher conferences.
Maybe an old, an old topic to bring up that relates to this, we had talked previously about having board members kind of partnered with each building, call her better. And we, we've talked about it enough a few times, we never solidified what that would look like, and I know there's some questions or differing opinions as to what that would look like as to each board member kind of taking a building or whatnot, but maybe this is a place where we can start, at least with saying such-and-such has the middle school, and they're going to have done these things, and we'll be present at the middle school to start building that relationship, and we're willing to do that tonight.
Sure.
To beat that up.
I think it's fantastic, yes.
But we can continue the conversation as to what more that could look like, but I think this is an obvious place to start.
I'll take BCI.
I'll take Stephen Bell.
BMS.
I would volunteer for the high school, and I would propose maybe maybe four buildings, five of us, maybe perhaps put two with the high school, there are significantly larger number of events and things happening at the high school. I'm happy to take either the high school or those buildings.
I'm happy to do BMS as I just said, however, these dates are in conflict to me, but as far as they, this is a now and forthwith, right, that we would essentially be a representative or face to these buildings, right?
I recommend this probably more as a longer discussion, and I'm welcome Dr. Cozad to put together some thoughts, and we can certainly talk a little bit about it here, but I'm a little uncomfortable, like, token, doing everything, so we can start, but I don't know, we should fully define or anything, find a, make a building or something.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. Committing to going to these open houses, that's all I'm, I'm.
That's true, since they're coming out of this, yeah. And then what, what that totally looks like, and kind of what the, when the rubber meets the road, that's like, that could be, yeah, okay, so I heard.
So you very quickly run on.
BCI?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Stephen Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Can't do BMS for those dates.
All right, well, I think you said high school, so what if I, I can hang out at the middle school?
Okay. High school with you then?
So who was high school?
Mrs. Dorn. How could be your, your middle school in Mr. Price's absence?
Did you say you prefer middle school, just you can't, you prefer middle school, but you can't be at these dates?
I'm going to have to look at this, I'll figure out which ones I can team up with, because I, I got a kid going off to college and all that kind of stuff, and he's got a, my wife can help me out back there, but he's a.
You and Mike work out which, which of you takes the high school slot, which takes the middle school.
And I can place this on that board events calendar, and I will put these on there if you want to change or whatever else. That, that's just the place that you go to see the dates, everything up along that calendar.
People could probably tell we're chomping at the bit for this, this is the fun stuff. We've been doing a lot of this last year and a half, making a concerted effort of going to all the plays and the band concerts and sports and everything, and that's a lot of fun. I think open houses are my favorite thing, you see smiling faces coming in.
And I got a lot of invitations into classrooms that were fantastic, and all of those are wonderful, and, you know, I always make sure to clear those to Dr. Cozad, too, so it's just fantastic security presentation.
Could people say, isn't that a lot of work, isn't it a lot of time going to all those, and like, it's the best, being able to go to that stuff, just be present, be available for lunch, so.
Absolutely.
That's probably why we're all excited about it.
Yep.
Okay.
And then I just had a question, Dr. Cozad, there's a lot of discussion, I know, in the parent age about vouchers, would it be possible or realistic, if we kept on the spot, to have Mr. Liming talk about the impact that we've made to our district, or if any there's any, you know, there's confusion about how many dollars follow and what that means for our, I mean, just a quick like 10 minutes, 5 minutes of meeting at some point, if you're comfortable, if there's even a clear definition of what that means for us?
Right now or in August?
In August, no, 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 not now, not now. It's going to be now.
Definitely. August 13th, we can definitely look at that on the agenda, we can look at the board, the budget bill, and kind of review some things, and parse those things out.
Yeah, that would be great, we could do that, that would be awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we can look at it kind of globally and then impact on DSS.
Right, that, that would be great, because I know there's a lot of misinformation right now.
Other questions, comments?
So last, to add this then, Kathy Kingston was a member of our school board from 2006 to 2015, for 14 years, and she passed away on Saturday, but she was quite a vibrant and delightful member of the school board. Her, her kind of passion was with as being the legislative liaison, she had worked for the board about that, whatever was current, whatever was happening, everyone, you know, that was her, that was her niche, where she really liked, liked to serve. She did that very enthusiastically as well, so, you know, if you needed a cheerleader for writing a letter to your congressman, she would be the one to be able to provide that for you. She and I didn't always agree on school board, and that's okay, we're still friends, I was sometimes being. I would sometimes be one person out, and, but still, she was very sweet, and it was delightful to serve her. She'll be best in our community for sure. Memorial services for her are going to be at Conner &amp; Co, downtown Bellbrook, on September 22nd, stations early in the morning, and then funeral services in the area a little bit later. She was a, she was a delightful member of the board for, for at least the four years I served with her, for 14 years, 2006 to 2019.
She taught here, right?
Yeah, she taught here. I was going to say, she was.
That was good, I think.
She was my English teacher as a freshman, and she forever changed my path, so I was an English teacher because of her and Chris Long, and I just, she was amazing woman. She would be just wonderful, so she would be great.
She has a, she has a daughter who's one of the teachers in our district.
She had Stephen Bell.
Yeah, and her son-in-law, Ben, as well.
Yeah.
And the September, pardon me, can I say September? I'm so sorry. It is July, July 26th, so it's a week from Sat.
Forty from Saturn.
I don't know why I said September. Sorry, Dr. Long.
Dr. Nuneau, comments? I would make a motion to adjourn for a second.
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Dorn. Mr. Liming, please call the role.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Isn't it way too early? I mean, yes.[1785.33]